All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our June 15th Board Supervisor Meeting. This time we'll call our meeting in order. Mr. Slade, will you have an invocation for us?
I'd like to. Let's pray together. Well, God, thank you for this creation that you've made for us, Father, for calling us to be your people, Father, for giving us the abilities that you've given to us so that we might lead this community. Father, thank you to these men for their service, for their sacrifice. Lord, we think about our men and women who are out there on the front lines, serving us and protecting us and providing safety. Father, I pray to them. I pray, Father, for their encouragement in these tough times. I pray, Father, that they know this community appreciates all that they do to keep us safe. Father, I pray that you would help us today to serve you. Father, define your will today, Father, and let us do it in a way that pleases you and helps our community. Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. See, we have Mayor Lee here with us from Branning. Thank you for coming. For public comment, we have the Quality Group with us today. Come on up.
Please silence your phones.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. I'm Joe Di Giovanni. This is Eddie Gonzalez. We're with Quality Group of Jackson. We're here to present our proposal and answer any questions you may have. We've prepared a PowerPoint, but this is a limited discussion, so we actually printed those frames for you. This addresses the Rankin County Chancery Court Relocation Project, in which we will actually be on-site to execute the services that you see in this PowerPoint, and also the proposal is also attached for your viewing. The main portion of this is a file transfer. What we do is we actually provide you a rolling file cart to transfer the files. We create a timeline that's based on the court's desired timeframe for the move, and we execute that from start to finish. Eddie Gonzalez is the general manager here in Jackson, and he has actually walked the space. And you have any comments with this?
Yeah, you have about 35,000 square inches, linear inches of files to move. Half of them are on shelving out in the space, half of them in file cabinets. So our plan is to take all the files on the shelving, put them on carts, shrink wrap them, bring them to the other building, download them, put them back on the shelves, the new shelving that y'all receiving from the new building. And what we'll do is work with your staff to do that, and make sure that the proper placement of all the files are put back in their proper order. And the ones that are in the file cabinets, the file cabinets will be moved over to the new location, taken out files, taken out of the files, put on a shelving, then bringing the files back to the old building. And what we try to do is to make a time schedule to make this happen for y'all over a week period, a weekend period, so this is done. You probably have 230 carts of files to move, which is a big, it's a big project, a really big project. We left you with some references we've done in the past with UMC. We moved the federal courthouse files, the federal courthouse library, and big file systems for law firms downtown, going to Milwaukee. I encourage y'all to call those people that we dealt with in the past and use them as references. And the other portion of the file, of the move is the furniture and PC move. And what we'll do is shrink wrap all the PCs. We bubble wrap them, place things in bags. That's a small part of the move, it's probably two or three truckloads, but the biggest part is the file system and getting it located. And we've done this over, I mean Louisiana, Mississippi, for the last 20 years.
Thirty-three years we've been in business, and we've actually moved most of the courthouses. We actually did the U.S. Federal Courthouse in Jackson, Mississippi, along with a number of large law firms that also have the same type of file systems. It's an open system that has to be downloaded onto the carts. That's the biggest portion of this relocation project. We'll come in with 13 men to actually execute this project, and like I said earlier, Eddie and I will be on-site throughout the entire process. Owner managers on-site, so that we have continuity in everything that we guarantee to you in terms of the start time and finish time.
And what we try to do is load up the carts on this side. A crew brings it to the truck, and another crew on the other side uploading them on the shelves. So it's a continuous process. We're not just gonna load up from the truck. The same crew goes over there. We want to try to keep it rolling to where it's at least a matter of time. The more, the more people, what we'd like to try to call it is kind of an organized chaos, just make sure things keep moving. Because the toughest thing is those elevators coming in and out of the elevators. So it's our intention to get all the, get all the carts loaded up, and as it goes over, as the car gets loaded up, it goes over to the other building and uploaded.
But that does it. It also keeps your staff from having to box those files. It's an organized way to transfer files from one location to the other. Each cart is labeled, and we follow left to right configuration. And then we stretch wrap those carts while we're in the process of moving it from point A to point B. We'll work closely with the staff, and we'd really appreciate an opportunity to work with you guys on this project.
Can you guys tell the board how you're gonna handle staffs on personal items? How can we expect that to be handled by you guys?
Well, what we do is we provide you with these plastic moving totes, along with the fact that the contents are gonna be packed by each staff person. We go through a series of planning meetings with the staff to show them exactly what's involved. And part of that is a label process that's gonna follow a floor plan. That floor plan is gonna be set by seat assignments or where people will be sitting. They will be given a number. That number is what coincides with the labels that we use. And those labels are peel and stick removable. It has floor room in peace. The staff meetings are also conducted by Eddie and myself, where we come out and meet with each person to talk about what is their responsibility in the relocation process, and what is the responsibility of the Quality Group.
Yeah, the employees will pack their own desk and their own personal items. Some of their personal items, if it's real, are something that is irreplaceable, like maybe a trophy, their grandchild award, or something like that. We encourage them to take those things home, and we can supply them with boxes to take those items home. Sometimes companies don't want to move personal items strictly courthouse materials and things like that. But all the packing supplies, tape, labels will be supplied to everybody, and we'll have one hand. At the end of the project, we give you like two weeks to come out of the produce, and we come back and pick them up. So you want to go purchase any type of supplies, employees. It's a good time to purge. Have the employees go through their desks, get rid of all the ketchup, the mustards, and all that other stuff, clean it out, and get rid of the old materials that they haven't been sitting in their desk drawer for how many years. They're going into a beautiful place, nice new furniture. So we want to keep things current and keep things that you need to work with.
So all of your PC equipment will be disconnected. We provide you with an accessory bag, that's for your mouse, your mouse pad, all your accessory wires go into that bag, and then we actually transfer that equipment on equipment carts. Again, the contents is the only thing that the staff will actually be packing. Everything else, general areas, common areas, storage areas are actually packed by the Quality Group using our rolling file cart system.
I think we're looking forward to getting to that point.
Okay, any other questions?
Other than the one right here, you said you moved the courthouse. What have you done locally, recently, locally, where you're around here locally?
Formerly at Watkins. We moved their whole file unit, probably 14,000 square feet.
Watkins system.
Pardon me?
The law firm?
Law firm, yeah. It's got file systems.
We just completed Horn Accounting Firm out in Madison this past January, which was a large accounting firm. We did that in a weekend. Typically, our jobs are always done after hours and on weekends. And what we'll do is we come in and we put together that timeline that suits the court for that type of process.
And what are you anticipating, a timeframe on getting the files moved over here?
We're looking at five by five days.
About five days?
In the proposal, there's actually a portion of that that we go through under the cost of services. And it talks about the number of carts that are involved, and then we actually have it broken down.
By truckloads and things like that. And it's all based around the court schedule. Like I said, you've got 35,000 square linear inches of files, which is a lot of files.
It's 133 carts, to be exact. And typically, we will take eight minutes to download and to put those files onto those carts. Each cart has 135 linear inches. And there's also 156 vertical file cabinets that we have to remove the contents and merge into that file system. So there's gonna be quite a bit of work on the planning side of this to come up with the exact timeframe. Looking at that, you know, five days, what Brandon's looking for.
Other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Next, for public comment, we have Mr. Carl Franco.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The word for today is cluster first. If you've ever watched Heartbreak Rears, that was when the general, they were mobilizing. General asked Clint Eastwood what he thought of the mobilization. He told him it was a cluster fluster. That's what we're trying to avoid. And as you just heard these gentlemen, that's part of what we're trying to help do is coordinate some 20 subcontractors and working with the contractor, vendors, furniture people, so that when we get down this time next month, there's no cluster fluster. I can't guarantee it, but you know, before Judge Grant retired, he threatened holding me in contempt of court if we didn't get this done right. So I'm trying to avoid that the best I can. But what I want to kind of do this morning quickly is give you an update from this last meeting, because there is a tremendous amount of stuff going on. I start to get a little worried at this time when you're trying to close out a project, and I'm starting to lose some confidence in the information I get. And so we meet with the contractor weekly, usually on Fridays. Had a meeting with him this past Friday, spent about three hours going over his plan for the next few weeks to make this come off. They are, whoever's gonna be doing the moving, it's this group, they're talking about July 17th through the 19th, so that you can hold court operations on the 20th. So we're trying to back up and make sure that the contractor has everything ready for that. But he went through a very detailed schedule that made me have a lot more confidence in this. For instance, this week, looking at the weather, we're supposed to have good weather, so they're focusing on the exterior this week, although they're still working on the interior. So after our Friday meeting, I felt much better about the chances of getting all this done. But the concern I still have is it doesn't take much, one thing, and it dominoes. So I just wanted to let you know that we are moving toward that. One other item that came up this week, last board meeting, you approved additional costs for Mike. The price we're getting back is higher than what we anticipated. I'm not saying that we, we haven't had a chance to study that. I don't, I think it's too high. But I'm trying to avoid delays, so I would ask the board to extend a not-to-exceed amount of another $10,000 on that.
We did 20?
It was 20 before, and we're getting a $30,000. We hadn't determined why it's higher. And like I say, I hadn't agreed to that yet. We don't have the backup, but I don't want to be waiting till the next board meeting to get that approved, because that would delay getting everything. We still are some $400,000 under the bond issue amount, even if that's the case, at least the figures I'm getting right now. So I'm just trying to avoid this last-minute cluster fluster, if we can.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to the board, now answering any questions that you have about anything else. They were supposed to understand, when we met Friday, they were gonna work Saturday and Sunday over there, and that's their, that's what they told us they're gonna be doing till the end of the project, and at night they need to. So, as far as I know.
I'm sure they're ready to get out of there, too.
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Motion by Steve to add it, second by Daniel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it now.
I make a motion that we increase the, up to 20,000 to up to 30,000 for this sound system, whatever.
Motion approved by Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank y'all. Y'all have any questions, don't hesitate. Y'all know where I'm at. Keep me out of jail.
All right, Carl, thank you.
It's new.
Is Mike, you gonna do it, Brian?
Yeah.
Come on.
Just a quick update, I'm standing in for Mike Word this morning. His dad had surgery. They took him back. They were gonna remove the size of his leg, approximately the size of your hand. So if y'all will keep him and his family in your prayers this morning.
Brian, before you go, I know you were assisting in Simpson County, and I thank you, I thank all of first responders, just like Craig put in the prayer. Our Rankin County delegation of first responders played heavily for 24 hours, and not that everybody else, but we can't thank y'all enough. Our law enforcement, our first responders, you guys, EOC, we live in a very special county, I'll tell you that, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
I want to add one more thing. Brian contacted me a while ago before the meeting started, and he said today they're gonna meet here at 4:30 and gonna head back down to Simpson, and they need anybody who wants to volunteer looking for more evidence in the woods. I think there's a gun still missing, maybe some shackles. But they're gonna meet down there at Men Hall at 5:00 today.
Yeah, also, another event that happened this weekend was Warren County had an elderly male go missing, had some car trouble, never made it back home. So we sent approximately 10 folks from Rankin County over there to assist in looking for him, but so far, we've been unsuccessful on that.
Just found a vehicle, and that's it?
That's it. About three miles from his home.
Was it broke down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He was not the silver, that was DeSota County or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, I don't believe they ever issued. He was 64 years old, diabetic, that kind of thing, so. But anyway, what I'm here to talk about today is the community face mask that the governor spoke about several weeks ago. Some counties have started handing those out. We've received so many phone calls down at EOC that we've actually had to put a recording on the line first to answer the questions before they ever make it back to us. That's been very successful. But Rankin County received approximately 49,000 of these community washable face masks. And there's a big difference between the KN95s, like we receive for our first responders, those are one-time use only. These community masks, it actually says on the label, they can be washed up to 15 times. Yeah. Yeah, this is a good example here. This is what our first responders are wearing, these are the N95s right here. This is something toward the washable ones that we have. They're made by Hanes, so they're like underwear-type material. But we just wanted to come to you guys and see if you had any direction on how you wanted to do that. Counties are doing it all kinds of different ways. One of the things, Mike has talked to the nonprofit group, Legacy of Life, right down here, that took over the laser office supply building, I believe it is, and they said they could help hand those, hand out about 15,000 of those. Only reason they can do that is because of staff, limited staff and everything. So that leaves us approximately 34,000. I just kind of wanted to see what y'all's direction on handing those out. Another option we have is we can take them to the health department and drop them off and let them handle it.
I think we're moving them, I mean, I'm not saying don't get everybody, anybody that wants to help, but I'd say between Brad and myself, we've gotten probably 10,000 of them to churches and things like that. And I'm gonna keep doing it.
Yeah, same here. I put probably 2,500 out, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's definitely, we can continue doing that. If y'all are happy with that, we're happy with it.
Well, a lot of, a lot of the churches are, some of them's already started, but some are getting back in the routine, and I think just give them to churches, and they can distribute them throughout their community and.
Well, they need to let them be able to know, because as you say, 10,000 church memberships, I'm saying don't overgive that amount to a church that doesn't have.
Brian, do we have an idea when we get more?
We do not. It's a roll of the dice. We typically receive shipments of PPE on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I'll find out what we're getting on Tuesday tonight about 10 o'clock, and then we'll pick it up tomorrow. And it's just random stuff. It's whatever the warehouse has to give out, they give out. But as far as the community mask goes, we have not been notified that there will be another shipment. So that may, we're thinking that's all we're gonna get.
So we're gonna be 100,000 short?
At least. I mean, if you look at each, each citizen getting one, we would be at least 100,000 short.
Yeah.
And that was one of the issues we had, you know, it's like, we kind of wanted to wait till we got enough for everybody before we handed out, but didn't know like we're gonna be getting that.
I'm encouraging the churches to use their Sunday School classes, the people, most of them aren't having Sunday School, so they can take those and help distribute them. I mean, if you're looking at, a small church may have eight different Sunday School classes with five people in each one, 40 people that know their community and can assist them, give them a pack of five, you know, a home. And that's what I'm encouraging, is don't just think that these are where right here when you're at church, because they're, like you said.
They're washable.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just running some numbers here, started out 49,000. If we give 15,000 to Legacy of Life to help distribute, that's gonna equal out to around about 6,800 masks per each one of y'all, if that's the direction you want to go.
That's a good idea. I'm trying to think still, the best way to get them out, because the church population may not be with, you know, 800.
Well, it sounds to me like Brad and Steve are giving out all theirs, so the rest of them go to my history.
I have about 2,000 or 3,000 left.
Yeah.
Because you said about 49,000, it could have been a little more.
Yeah.
All right, well, tell me where we.
It's not gonna be good, because we're gonna be short too many.
Way too many.
Yeah, just come by and we'll be happy to give you.
Okay.
Any other questions for EOC?
Did we give any answers?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have members from Waste Management here with us.
Only one of you?
Only one of us.
Morning, Dave.
Morning. Thank y'all for inviting us back. Katie, this morning, sent me a text that she was at the doctor's office, and so I'm here, ready to talk.
Well, I'll start, David, and.
Don't be timid.
Yeah, jump on in.
I know we had a meeting here first this month with y'all, and what, I understand y'all, me and you've talked, and I know that y'all had some electrical issues by lightning strike. Well, what we're not getting communicated is when y'all are not making your routes, somebody needs to call and contact us. And, because when people start calling the office here, calling me, wanting to know why the garbage is not getting picked up, we need to be able to give them an answer. And I know that happened on the 6th, on the 8th, and the 10th. And the only response I got from Katie was ran out of gas, that y'all were on the routes, but didn't have enough gas to complete the route.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, we just need to be contacted. So wherever who's over the route manager, they either need to contact a supervisor or let us know that the routes are not gonna get picked up.
Yeah, sure. Who would y'all like to make the point of contact to be?
I'd like for them to have a backup plan, because they'll bring gas, or any, I mean, they'll bring whatever you want.
Well, it's, it's actually CNG, compressed natural gas, and we run that station that we put in at our facility.
Yeah.
And there was only one other fueling station, and it was in Flowood, and it actually shut down, so we're the only one left now in this area. Well, the Mississippi Materials may have a small plant. They fuel at our place a lot, because we have a public fueling facility set up. And we did get struck by lightning twice on Friday, and we had to ship parts in. But you should have known prior to us going out, we should have told people, hey, we had a fueling issue this weekend, and here's our plan. We've got to get better at planning. I mean, I agree.
It would be better if we could put something out that your garbage will not be picked up in the morning.
Picked up today.
Yes. Have it ready for Tuesday.
Well, here's, again, I think I've talked to Brad about this, we should know by 3:00 in the day where we are. If we don't, then we're in trouble. I mean, we're not doing our job. So if y'all will give me a point of contact, who y'all would like to be called and told.
Janice.
Not even call, we can email. Send her an email and say.
I'd like to know personally.
Me, too.
We get the phone calls, too.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't have.
I have no problem. If y'all, I'll call, I'll call each and every one of them. I'll tell them to give me a.
Email's fine to get to us, we would know.
I'll send an email, get an email sent to Janice.
Include Janice, because on the weekend, at night, sometimes where I live, there is no phone service. I mean, she knows how to get in touch with me. We, a coffee can, a string, no, I mean, really.
I understand. But I will tell them, put a plan, you know, to execute it, let y'all, let Janice know, when I see the email, I'll be copied on it. I'll pick up the phone and try to get in touch with each and every one of them.
It's actually over that part.
And I'll do a follow-up with you.
Well.
You're not directly over that anymore, are you?
No, 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 sir, I'm not, but I will, I will do it. I will do it. And to go to that, we have replaced the operations manager. I think I told Brad that. We're bringing in a guy, Kenneth Natch. Y'all may remember Kenneth. He worked for us for about three years, did a great job. He took over Monroe, Vicksburg area, and last week, decision was made to bring Kenneth back. So Kenneth will be coming in as the district manager of operations. He should be here tomorrow. I'll bring him around to meet each and every one of you, let y'all get to meet Kenneth. He, he understands the business.
Will this be the person responsible for knowing when they're gonna run our gas?
Yes. He will be.
Because you know, that's really, y'all know how parties' trucks go.
We do.
You know, so that should have been taken care of on the front end.
Well, we, we gotta build up 3,500 pounds of PSI, and I was told the trucks went out with 2,200 pounds of PSI. But I mean, there are different methods of handling that. It wasn't handled properly, I have to agree, but we will get, it will be handled properly in the future. The plan is back up and running.
Just so you know, I mean, I don't know, but right there in Florence, there are actually three, and I know one you can go up there and fill up on.
Is it compressed CNG?
I don't know.
I mean, if you, if you please tell me, I'll investigate it.
I mean, is this just, you talking propane?
No.
No, no, no. Natural gas.
Natural gas? No, I don't know about that.
Yeah. It's compressed natural gas, and it has to be compressed down in tubes and cylinders and, you know, pushed into the trucks.
Well, David, that is an issue that probably, hopefully, won't happen again for a while. When you were running it, we had little glitches here and there. But most of the time, you would be calling me and telling me about something that had happened, but you're taking care of it.
Yes.
We don't have that service anymore. And to come in here, we, I did let the lady say what she said the last time, about roads, like I'm talking about the first, on the first, where they missed, where nobody's garbage got picked up on a complete county road.
Yes, sir.
And she said, well, we ran early that morning, probably before they got their garbage out there. Well, in the county, about half the people put their garbage out the night before. There's no possible way that that road.
That everybody's gone.
That nobody put the garbage out the night before, and nobody got their garbage picked up. We're not addressing a problem if we're making excuses that are not true, you know?
Yes, sir.
And you never did that. I mean, you would tell us when you were wrong, and you'd tell us how you're gonna fix it.
That's what we're.
That's what's more frustrating.
We, we're getting back to that, I promise you.
Well, it makes us look bad when we're talking to, we're talking to the public.
And we tell them that, and they say, you're a liar. They tell me, you know, Steve Gaines, you're lying to me. And I go, no, I'm not, I'm just telling what they told me. I said, well, you know, our garbage was put out Saturday at about 7:30 in the evening. But I got one more thing, and I promise I'll shut up. But this has been, and you know, this has been. Uh, but I got one more thing, and I promise I'll shut up. But this has been, and you know, this has been building on us.
Yes, sir.
Uh.
The building of.
On you, on them, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people, but these people pay for a service that a lot of times, it's the same ones that aren't getting it. Thirty-three Marcella Street in La Bougeoire. Now, this is a very small incident, but to this lady, it's big. She puts her garbage out, she has a big, nice, rubber-made garbage can, big, nice, rubber-made garbage can. Time after time, when they would pick her garbage up, they'd throw the garbage can and it'd roll down a hill. She's not able to go down there and get that garbage can, so she'd have to get one of her neighbors to help her get the garbage can and get it back up to her driveway. So after many times of that, she wrote a note, says, please do not throw my garbage can down the hill. Thank you, and her name. Put it on the side of it. They didn't throw it down the hill, they throwed it in the garbage cut truck. She don't have a garbage can no more. At first, well, after Katie was called, she said, well, I don't know if they did it or they didn't, let me, well, those folks out there knew they did. Somebody saw them. So they had to admit to it. Yes, we did it. Why would you do, the lady says, why would you do that when I wrote a note? She said, well, they didn't read the note. Well, do you throw everybody's garbage can down in the back, you know? Well, that's okay. All this is okay, except, lady said, well, just buy me another one. She said, well, we can only give you thirty dollars. So I went and I took pictures of her two neighbors' garbage cans. Hers was bigger and stouter than those two. It's rollers, got a lid that does like this, you can buy them at Home Depot, eighty-nine dollars. She said, I'd be satisfied with one like my neighbors. So I talked to, I left Katie a message and she left me one, and we're gonna try to take care of this. In the end, the lady that handles our business at Tax Collector's Office also talked to her, Janice has talked to her, we can give her thirty dollars. That contract should be worth more than thirty dollars.
Yes, sir. Thirty-three Marcella Street?
Yes, sir. Killing, killing, Miss Killing.
I'll go get a can and take that to myself.
I'll make sure to send it out, God.
I, I, I'll make sure a can's delivered.
That's our point. I think their point, y'all been, you've been pretty good on some issues that I've had, but that's our point.
Community service and communicating with these people.
Public relations thing. I mean, obviously you threw the garbage can away. I heard about it too. Obviously you threw it away. So the end result, give her another one. I don't care if it costs a hundred dollars.
That's right. I agree with you whole argument.
I mean, the last thing we wanna see is this lady having to go to just, not having to, but going to justice court, sign affidavit, they stole my garbage can. What's the Waste Management gonna say? No, we didn't? Yeah, you did. Cause they've admitted to it. They say, yeah, we got it.
And why in the world would they get the garbage can? I mean, they usually, sometimes they might beat them up, but don't ever throw them in the truck.
I don't.
I know you can't answer.
Let's wait for that.
I mean, in the, at the end of the day, what we need is, ever who's over this route, manager that's sitting there at their computer can tell where these trucks have been traveled. And if they show back at the shop about two hours early, something happened. I mean, they need to trace out the routes and see if all of them got hit. If they did, give us a call. Let us know why.
Yeah, well, we, they shouldn't even come to the yard if they, if they hadn't finished their route. They should do a route check before they come in. It should be done when the driver finishes the route. He should call in, say route completed, and sit still, let me look. And we have P V A, prior versus actual. So it shows you, you know, the actual route that they're supposed to run. And then it should put the actual on top of it. The prior is the real route that is routed and the actual is what they did that day. So we should know. It's all about communications and we're, and we're lacking in that. And we, we will get better, I promise you.
Y'all, y'all skipped, uh, a couple of roads and I think probably cause you had new route or so, on a different route driver. But the thing, uh, you know, I started getting the calls, I immediately emailed y'all. Y'all had them out there doing it. That's the way we need it. But like you said, that's the reason we need to know about these things. People gonna, they may all call us, but a lot of them gonna call us. And we need to be able to, don't sound dumb, we need to be able to tell them something, so.
We, we did it in the past. We can, we can do it again. It's all about communication. And we've gotta get better.
That's right.
So whoever, whoever's in.
Especially in these times.
Needs to, needs to take note.
And if, if y'all all have time, um, this week, uh, I'll be calling each and one of y'all and bring Ken, invite him to meet you wherever you wanna meet. The point is, is made, been made clear. That's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I hate Katie couldn't make it.
I'll send you that information.
Next public comment, we have Mr. Ronnie Colvin with Comcast.
Morning.
Morning. How you doing? Again, I'm Ronnie Colvin with Comcast, and I've got Gary Carlson with me. He's a Supervisor of Construction for Comcast as well. We had a, just a, uh, we'll call it an issue, but it was a change in, uh, some of the construction plans that, uh, we're now required to do in new subdivisions. And we really just wanted to kinda talk to you about it, kinda let you know the way it's impacting our business and, uh, and, uh, wanted to see if you could, uh, you know, possibly help us on that. And I'm gonna let Gary explain the situation, if that's okay. His name is Gary Carlson.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
I've been in the communication industry since nineteen seventy-two. I've actually built some of the first cable TV in the Brandon area in the seventies. I've been employed by Comcast for over forty years now. Uh, I'm responsible for Monroe, Shreveport and the Jackson area. We've gone through some permit changes over here in Rankin County that we're not really excited about, and we wanna talk to you about that. I've also been appointed by the Governor to sit on the Damage Prevention Board, uh, representing the Cable TV Association of Mississippi. And on this board, you know, we all talk about underground, which is main area. So I know that in other municipalities around this area, they've had some problems with bad players coming in, tearing up their utilities, tearing up their infrastructure, and also in your area also. And that caused other areas to require more permitting. But we don't necessarily mind the permitting, it's the requirements that go with permitting. We do permitting with all the municipalities, we do it with the state. And it's not an issue, but when you came over here to your new permit guidelines, the five-foot depth all the way, we started having an issue. Well, communications is supposed to be from twenty-four to thirty-six inches deep. Power is usually around forty-eight inches deep. Now, with that being said, in order to get five feet deep, if you have to work in an area where there's pedestal, you have to put an shorebox, and we're talking about residential neighborhoods, and we're talking about, you're asking us to go underneath the power, and it's not safe for our workers. Now, we use directional boring, we do not trench anything. And I've talked to Mike Harrison about this. Our directional units, our crews that are here locally have been with me for twenty-five years, the contract crew. We don't bring in out-of-town people. Uh, we have all in-town crews that have been working here for a long time. And we can put in at two or three feet deep and get to five within a rock. And then we'd like to recover back up at three, so we're not disrupting the homeowners. We, Willow Grand is subdivision, we stopped doing anything. And we went out there to try the five-foot rule, and we had more complaints from the homeowners. Uh, it's actually gonna increase our cost of doubling, which won't enable us to be able to build to your residential customers. And that's a real hard point. Now, on underground, you're supposed to maintain eighteen inches vertically and horizontal from other utilities. That's not an issue. But the only thing we're asking for is some relief in this five-foot depth all the way. And I don't know if any of you have ever worked in the communication industry, the utility industry. That's really a hard thing to do.
So what are the other municipalities you worked with?
Thirty-six inches. The state is thirty-six inches. Louisiana is thirty-six inches.
Let, let me, let me ask you a question. How this all started with Comcast was, was, and you were talking about permits, which triggered my mind.
Right.
Y'all were in Castle Woods without a permit, right?
Yes, sir.
So how did you get in there, laying fiber without going through our permit process at all?
Laying fiber.
What were y'all doing in there when, without a permit?
Building coax for the resident.
Do y'all, are you supposed to have a permit for that?
Uh, we found out we were supposed to, yes.
Did y'all not know that?
No, we did not.
How much work did y'all do in that reservoir area? A lot?
Uh, we do, uh, cable replacements. We don't build a lot of new build at all.
Do you know for a new build that you're supposed to have a permit to come in that area?
Yes, we do now. It was brought to our attention, and we immediately get on to it.
Yeah, and I guess my other thing is, the reason we're having, we're having problems, and I'm gonna tell you my frustration part. And I know we gotta put the fiber and, and cable and all in these places, but my problem is, is the road contractors that go in here and absolutely destroy these people's property. And it, and it's, it goes on throughout the reservoir area. I can't tell you how many subdivisions that we go in behind it, that we go in and you damage infrastructure that's in place. And then by the time we determine it, y'all have already gone and left. Whether it's cutting into sewer lines, whether it's cutting into other cable lines, whatever it is, it goes to water lines, those things of that nature. So over the last year, and it hadn't been with Comcast, cause obviously y'all weren't doing work at this point. But we've had numerous, numerous problems with infrastructure people installing these fiber lines or cable lines or, uh, lines underground in many subdivisions throughout the reservoir. I won't even talk about the other gases there. I'm just gonna talk about mine. But we gotta get control of it, and we have to be on a regulated permit system. I'm the one guy in the world that can't stand government regulation. I hate it. But what we can't have from the same point is, we can't have people coming in here totally destroying people's property and not being checked about it, because they don't put it back. And then the cost goes on to the homeowner, and it's just not a right thing to do. So a lot of the regulations and permits that we put in eight months ago, ten months ago, was to try to get control of all the infrastructure addings or adjustments that were being made at the time. So, again, the reason you were shut down in Castle Woods was because you came in and you didn't have a permit, which is why it was stopped. People started calling us complaining about Comcast, and we said, look, Comcast's not even working over there. And said, oh, yes, their trucks are here. We've talked to the people. It was like, no, we don't have any permits. That's when we went out, found out, lo and behold, y'all are working. So this is the kinda stuff that drives us absolutely insane, us being the people that live at the reservoir area. And I'm sure that's that way in other districts as well, but I'm gonna speak for the people I represent. It's a very, very frustrating problem. So we have certain processes and permit regulations that are there. The other contractors, we're holding them accountable to it. They're complying to it. So if they're complying to the regulations that we asked for in Rankin County, then in my opinion, that's what we suggest you guys do. So I have a very small, small level of patience for our contractors going out here doing these operations because of the damage you're causing. Not you, but, but not necessarily Comcast. But companies are causing to the homeowners that live in these areas. So it drives me absolutely insane. We've had numerous areas where we've had, uh, holes not covered up, not properly marked, children falling into them. We've cut water lines, nobody's notified the county on the same side. We've had entire subdivision with no water. And none of that stuff's a big deal to you, unless it's your child in there, or your neighborhood doesn't have water, and those type of things. So it's, it's hard to wrap a graph around it, but I'm extremely frustrated with the system and the process. But the permit system we've had over the last ten months is working. And the companies we have in there right now, I believe it's Delta that's in there right now. Mine, is that right? Delta's in there working. They're complying to these permit regulations, and I hadn't had any complaints. The last complaint I got was Comcast in the back of the Willows that were unpermitted. So I say all that to explain to you my frustration. I'm not for changing any of our permit regulations unless a road manager comes to me and says, Daniel, this is what we need to do. So, Slade, I don't know how you wanna go through here, but that's.
Why we so far with five feet, that is.
That's my take.
But here's the issue. We weren't notified. When did y'all send us a notification that a permit was required? I mean, Janice is, I, she and I talked at least.
I don't know that. We just went to every single contractor out there and said, by the way, there's a permit.
I mean, we're, we're a partner of yours. I mean, we're, they franchise.
Why wouldn't you have contacted us?
If you're coming in our area.
We don't know everybody that comes to this county and says, I'm gonna dig a line.
If you changed a, a law and required a permit, you would think that you would've contacted.
We gotta move on. We got a long agenda.
I, I'm not sure.
We're not gonna sit here and argue with you, okay?
I'm not arguing. I'm just saying we weren't notified. The reason this gentleman brought it up is he said we didn't have a, didn't have a permit.
Are y'all supposed to notify us when y'all come into subdivisions?
We get a permit, and that would be your notification.
So what happens that? Do y'all, do we come to you and say, hey, by the way, if you're gonna be in Castle Woods and need to get these permits? You come to us when you come to a neighborhood, right?
We have to get a permit. We found out we had to get a permit, and that's, that's the issue.
So you've never gotten permits before this time?
No.
No.
That's what I asked you.
In all Rankin County.
No, we haven't, we weren't required by Rankin County to get a permit. That's, that's, that's the issue.
Let me jump in.
So now we know.
But the issue, I mean, that's, that's a crock. You, you, you've got the fact that we were there, we, we got permits, now we got that part. What we're coming here to ask you and talk to you about is, is there a way to go from three feet, we'll get to the five feet. It's just, you've gotta dig a pit at, you know, right where we gotta go in with the.
Get the five feet.
And the homeowners, it's not just Comcast. It's doubling our expense. That's, that's not a good thing. But at the same time, you're building, uh, you're digging a hole big enough to get started at five feet and run the length of somebody's yard.
And you can't.
And you've gotta come up it that way at five feet. If you've gotta do, if you've gotta go up under a road, you've gotta build a, you gotta dig a five-foot pit, and you have to fortify it in case it were to collapse on somebody.
And also, the whole time, uh, Comcast had this area, we've never gotten a permit.
I mean, we've been doing business in here.
Let me explain.
You put fiber through the whole reservoir area and never received a permit?
No.
We, we've had our lines in the ground for forty-something years.
So we have no idea where anything's at, right? I mean, we're just.
We've had our lines in the ground for forty years. I mean, you have to ask some of your predecessors. I mean, they didn't require a permit.
New developments, which is a lot of them in the reservoir area. You've been there in, in those new developments for forty years.
No, I said, we have been doing business in Rankin County.
Well, we're not talking about forty years ago. We're talking about now. And the last two or three years.
And we weren't, we weren't not aware that we required, have a permit.
So how many, so how many subdivisions, let's just say the reservoir, and ballpark it, that you've gone in and put in this fiber installation with no permits?
We, we've all, we don't put it, I mean, if we're in an established subdivision, the only way we would go in there is if somebody, a bad actor, cut our line. That's, that's the only reason we ever have to go back and do a subdivision.
We haven't built that.
If somebody's damaged, damaged something. I mean, we, we don't, we, we didn't have to, our network will support every service we got. We didn't have to go in and put fiber. We've already got lines in the ground. That's what we're trying to get you to.
You're just mainly in there to do, when you're in there now, you're mainly to repair.
So what does the five-foot deal have any impact on you, if you're not putting any in?
Well, it's in new subdivisions. New, new subdivisions.
That's kinda what I was trying to drive. You're saying you don't do this, but on the other hand, you do it.
You, you missed, missed the whole point. It's new subdivisions.
No, I didn't miss a point. What I was gaining is when we're talking about the things you tear up, you say, we don't do that. We're not going.
Torn anything up. I mean.
Well, the subcontractors then. Let's say that.
Over, over the years, uh, we have had very few calls from Rankin County. When we have, we've responded back. But the problem is, is that your bad players came through here in a wave. They floated you ten or twenty crews. And so you had communications work, you had gas work, but only did you suffer, Comcast suffered.
They cut us?
They cut us.
So you're only putting one residence home in the back of the Willows? Is that what you're telling me?
What?
How many lines are you putting in in the back of the Willows?
One.
Just one?
Just one.
So you're done with that now, right?
No, I'm not done.
So what are you gonna do now?
We're building to approximately thirty residential houses.
But you've already got your infrastructure in place there, right?
No, I don't. I have not completed it.
Oh, I thought that's what you were telling me.
We shut it down.
We shut it down, because we went out there, normally we can get three to five hundred feet production a day. With the five-foot rule, we got a hundred and thirty-two foot. And, uh, it's just not working. It's not safe for our guys.
Hey, I, I want safety, and, and that's kinda my whole argument and point with this. We're, the reason we went to this process of these permits is we want it as safe as we possibly can get. That's what we want. The safety is the number one key to the whole deal, whether it's holes, cutting lines, whatever it is, the safety side of us. That's what's got us there. And also the communication process, because obviously y'all just went back in there and didn't know there's a process. We all know now, but that's the rules and regulations that we've got. So I don't know what else there is.
Five feet is what we're coming to ask you.
And I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask too, why, why I'm asking, that is deep, real deep. Why do we need five feet? I'm, I'm curious about that too.
I think Craig was gonna explain that to us.
Well, I'm just trying to find out.
Well, I'm sure he'll find out.
Okay, yeah. So, Comcast has, has had a presence, uh, at least, I, I saw a letter in there from Mr., to, to Mr. Kenneth Goss about our permit regulations. It looks like we, we may be talking over each other about when notifications were made and when permit, uh, application started, that type of thing. Bear in mind that Comcast, uh, goes all the way back to Rankin County Cable Company. That's how it began life in Rankin County. That goes all the way back into the seventies, alright? So, they've definitely had a presence. They've weren't called Comcast, but they've had a presence in Rankin County for quite a long time. Their, their initial approach to Rankin County was by way of what's called a franchise agreement. That's important to understand because we don't have very many of those. In fact, there are only two that I can think of. Uh, we have a franchise agreement with Comcast and it's been in place for well over forty years, probably closer to fifty. And we have a franchise agreement with Cispyr and it's much newer. And what we found is that, that there was a lot of confusion among our franchisors, your Comcast and your Cispyrs, about our permit requirement suggesting that they were not subject to the permit requirement because there was an intervening franchise agreement, okay? We helped them understand that that ain't so. But it took a while for us to get that point across to our franchisors that even though you have a franchise agreement in place, you are still subject to the permit requirements. They, I think for the most part, they understand that. And so, they're not here to argue with you guys about whether or not they ought to submit a permit. Keep in mind that we've heard that argument from our friends at Cispyr directly. And, but they've come around since then and I think things are much better. At least, my experience, my understanding is that things are much better with Cispyr from their compliance with our permit requirements, okay? So, I, I wanted to give that background that there may have been, up to a point, there may have been some confusion uh, with respect to whether or not Comcast was supposed to submit a permit application. Keeping in mind that for forty-plus years, they didn't because they believed that the franchise agreement provided them with the ability to enter into that right-of-way, that publicly owned right-of-way, without a permit, alright? So, thankfully they are complying with our permit requirement. I think the request to you guys is to consider, again, for, for whatever reasons, to consider giving Comcast a wave-off of the specific depth requirement that you're applying to all of the other utility installers.
And, and I'm not, I'm not in a position to change the way our permit sits. Unless our road manager comes to me and says, "Daniel, we got a problem and I need to move the depth." We've set those depths and we've had everybody else comply. I'm not, I'm not voting to give, and you may get a couple others that do, but I'm not voting to give an exception on depth for Comcast, Cispyr, eighteen, anybody. Everybody's gonna do the same thing. And whatever our road manager recommends to me to do, that's his wheelhouse and that's the way I'm going with it, so.
So, why have we set that depth and insisted on it? That's a good question to ask or to talk about publicly like this. The, the sine wave method of installation where you enter at a shallow depth, you approach the regulated depth and you stay at that depth for a distance and then you elevate up to the pedestal, the, the exit point, that sine wave approach. What we've noticed, what we have found consistently is that your breaks, your infractions, your conflicts with utilities occur in the swoop down and swoop up. So, we've insisted that we drop down to five and go straight and then drop straight up or come straight up. What we see is that we avoid consistent conflicts with other utilities when we use that method, okay? That's why you said, "Let's do it." Your engineer recommended, "Let's do it." Your road manager said, "Please do it." You did it. And so, uh, whatever is required as a result of that regulation, you've got a, a valid and a clear, valid legal basis to insist that that's how we're going to install in Rankin County. So, it's up to you and your discretion to decide whether or not an individual utility can have some sort of workaround. That's up to you guys to authorize that, but you can insist and it will hold uh, that we, that we install in this method.
Ronnie, what, what were you wanting?
All I was asking, well, I'm sorry, didn't mean to step on what you were saying. We're saying we'll go thirty-six inches is a normal depth. We were, you know, we're communication. That's kind of the communication space. What Gary is saying is we'll start at thirty-six feet. Do, to your point, like a sine wave. We'll get to the five feet. We'll start at three, where, where we're supposed to be to begin with. Go to five and then come back up on the other side. It's just when you build a pit, when you have to dig a pit to go down five feet deep, you have to dig a, dig a big old hole.
OSHA regs.
You've gotta reinforce it. You've gotta reinforce it.
You gotta put a trench box in too.
You gotta put a trench. Exactly right.
You're talking about in residential neighborhoods, I know.
Yeah. And that, that's all we're asking is just, let's just, to us, it's kind of a common sense thing and I, and I understand.
You're asking for a three-foot hole to start?
Yes, sir.
And then you're gonna go, the only, what he's saying though, is when you do that, you got three foot, okay? You're three foot, you go down five. It's, the problem we're having is when the swoop comes up, back up.
You got a pit that you're going into.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you're not gonna be in at five feet there.
Yeah, but can I add something to this? According to the law, everything's supposed to be located and we're supposed to be eighteen inches away from them, okay? If we're within that eighteen inches and we hit you, we have to pay for it.
If, if we find it?
Right, even, I've had a case out here, I think about two years ago, that you had a damaged thing in Castle Woods or somewhere and we went out there and we repaired it. It was our cost.
If, if we find it. The problem is, what happens is, it gets cut and then it takes a little while to figure out. Y'all are gone at that point. Who, well-
We're here.
The, the people are gone. I can't find, I can't find anybody that says, "Oh, by the way, we hit this line." And you say, "Well, we were in there, but we didn't hit it because you would've shown something earlier" or, or-
All you have to do is look at the locate report. It'll show who was there. Because that, that is, it is public record. You could get it, I could get it.
It sounds extremely easy, but it's, it doesn't work that way.
I, I understand. I mean, we've been, we're just saying-
I've had one hit electric line in the summertime and it not show up for six months until the ground got saturated.
If you nick it, you sure can. It'll, it'll oxidize and go back. I mean, it sure will.
So, y'all hadn't received any notification from us? Is that what you're telling us? The county hasn't sent y'all anything?
We didn't receive any.
Okay, so, who checks y'all's mail? Y'all have a certain, who, when we send that out, like on the letter you got right there, sent to Comcast, who did you send that to?
Kenneth Goss.
Okay, do we know who that is?
He works-
In March.
Okay, okay. March, March of this year, he got a letter flying from us, right?
I believe he was here at those meetings on Andrew Chapel when all the utilities, we called in to him.
Yes, he was.
Does he get mail?
Yes, he was.
He gets mail?
Yeah, he's working from home right now.
I got you. But on, in March, he would, right?
No, I didn't.
March seventeen.
Yes, he was.
Yeah.
So, somewhere in his mailbox, somewhere deep into the Comcast area, there's a letter to him.
God bless permits. We want permits. We, we have no prob, we can do permits as we do this.
He's just asking. He talking about the depth.
Yeah, we're all, I'm all about depth. I have no issue with permits.
I want everything, I want everything.
Hear that loud and clear.
Earlier though, you were saying that we didn't notify you. Couldn't we have mailed you a letter?
I'm just telling you, we didn't-
We can't mail it and come get it out of the box for you.
I understand. Look, we made a mistake. If we didn't get the letter, I, I can't, I can't unring that bell.
This is the way the permit things work. When we find it, we un, first, we didn't do it, we didn't do it, we, we hadn't even, and then when we find it, well, maybe we were there, but we didn't do it.
Have we got permits since we found out?
I don't know.
I mean, has anybody had any complaints?
I know, okay, let me say this.
Turn that mic on.
Only, the only complaints I've had is, uh, I haven't had no complaints in the yard. But the complaints I've had is y'all gone from a box this tall to a box that's about four foot by two foot, big old gray box. I've got a lady complaining about that that's now in her front yard, just four times the size of what she had in her yard. That's the complaints I'm getting.
It may have some equipment in it that didn't have any of the worst of that.
Yeah, it, it, she pulls in her driveway, it's a massive four-foot box right there. The eyesore she sees now is the Comcast box. So, she's extremely upset, but that's just, if that's what y'all put in her yard, that's what y'all put in her yard. Y'all got to deal with her, not me, but you're right.
I get that. But again, I just, please understand, we have no problem with your permit process.
Let's, let's have time to talk with Mike and Craig and digest this. I'm, if there's something we can do safely and Mike recommends it?
I appreciate you just, everybody just understanding.
You know, if we make a change, we, we'll have to make a change for everybody.
Yeah, it'll be for everybody.
Understand that. Understand. We're not asking, we're just trying to tell you, it, and, you know, we don't have any build-out requirements or anything like that. I mean, it may be that we, if, if we say it to double the cost, I mean, we'll have to make the decision whether we wanna put lines in there.
Let me ask you this. When you do, you dig that pit, it's five foot deep, how, how long is it?
Uh, it's about eight foot.
Huh?
About eight foot. Eight to ten to go short.
That's really gotta have a trench box, the whole thing.
You haven't taken through other utilities. That's another issue. You got gas, power. And we're having to go down five and the power company's at forty-eight inches. And, you know, we're down below that.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have something you want to throw in there?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question. How, how quick can they get from three foot to five foot?
In about four feet. About four feet.
I just, just so me and Tim could discuss that matter, you know?
So, the swoop would be real quick?
Yeah, it'd be fast because you're already sitting at thirty degrees.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, that's the thought.
But you can also, you know, back up past the point and shoot your ball in. Most people are backing up past their point, shooting the ball in, doing hydro excavate. It's for their pits. It's what most of the utilities are doing. They're not excavating somebody's yards.
But when you're doing a lateral across the road, okay, you have limited right-of-way work and you're having to back that machine up into the people's property. And that's an issue.
Right.
It's all an issue. The whole thing's an issue.
But where we got, where we got problems going across the road is, we've got multiple places in these neighborhoods where shallow bores have been made and now they're busting up our asphalt. Well, ninety-seven times where it's buckled or cracked or dipped, there's a shallow bore within a foot of the-
How shallow? Within a foot? See that, yeah, but they still be going deeper than that. It would be that shallow.
Here's, here's my biggest pain. And I want you to, I'm gonna say this, I know y'all are wrapping up and getting down, we're gonna go on, Jake. But let me, I've got over two hundred HOA subdivisions at the reservoir, two hundred. So, when you come into the county and you're putting these things in, even though you're putting them in these subdivisions, right? When we go through and we disturb the earth into, whether it's right-of-way access or not, the homeowners have problems with rogue installation stuff. I'm not saying you guys are rogue installation stuff, but they have problems with it. So, we had to get some control of it. That's what's got us to where we're at. We were having countless times, over and over and over, things getting damaged, cut, and nobody wants to take credit for it. I didn't do it. I wasn't there. Been there before. Sewer lines cut, seeping through people's yards. Six months to a year later, messes. Kids falling in holes. You pick it. We've had all kinds of stuff like this go on.
You've had a lot of folks work that I understand.
So, we have to get control of rogue installations. And again, I'm not saying you guys are rogue. I'm talking about in general. So, that's why those are there. Whatever recommendations that pretty guy in the Skittle purple shirt and the guy, uh, with the good hair on the backside wants is where I'm going because they know this business. I don't.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for coming. We'll definitely discuss it and see if we can help.
I appreciate you.
Kind of like a Skittle. I mean, it's kinda, I do too.
Okay, that's it as far as public comment goes. Yes, sir.
May I ask for the board to allow a deviation from the agenda? Do you guys allow me to jump up and discuss one item under my section that relates to why Mr. Mayor is here?
Okay. Absolutely not. I want him, I want him to sit through this thing to the end of it, right there with me. Matter of fact, he can pull his chair right up here by me and Gaines, but I want him here with me the whole time. I agree. I'm outvoted, I see. But if it was up to me, Mayor, you'd be up here with me.
Oh, goodness. So, we're gonna jump down and look at item N under my section, item N. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to read that whole long litany of agenda items for you, but my preference would be that you guys take a look at that and I'll just kinda give a, a big picture perspective here, alright? So, what we have, the situation that we have is that we have guidance, um, such as it is. I want to be very clear. The guidance that has been received primarily through the Office of the Governor and through the State Health Department has to do with bringing people in to court for court purposes. They are recommending a separation, a distancing, okay? And when you bring, when you empanel a venary for the purpose of drawing a jury, you bring in as many as, here in Rankin County, we've brought in as many as a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty individuals to actually be seated for the purpose of drawing a jury or venaring a jury, okay? And so, the, the setup that we have in our current Justice Center does not allow for us to bring, to ask that many citizens to come in and to maintain separation. Can't be done. So, Judge Enfinger has asked that this board consider determining, declaring that the Justice Center, both for the purposes of Circuit Court and for County Court, is not fit for the purpose of allowing for the separation to be able to empanel a jury. And so, they've set about to find an alternative location. That's why Mayor Butchley is here with us today. Uh, what they have done is they've gone to City Hall in Brandon and they have determined that that facility is sufficiently sized for us to be able to empanel juries and to conduct jury trials. It will work. And so, they are asking for this board to consider making that declaration so that we can enter into an agreement with the City of Brandon concerning the use of the, of City Hall. I asked, or Mr. Mayor asked if he could have an audience, uh, and he's here. If you, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to speak, please come forward. City Hall is an excellent substitute for this purpose. It has adequate parking, it has adequate size, it has all of the creature comforts that would be required for this purpose. The judges have all looked at City Hall and have determined that it is in fact suitable uh, and can be rendered at very little cost. It can be rendered capable of handling jury trial work. Uh, we actually can have rooms there where the separation can be maintained and allow for the conduct of a jury trial to occur.
Great. Before you go that far, the, uh, is it the empaneling all the juries, the, the hundred? Or is it just the court? After we select them, would it have enough room to do court?
It's actually both of those. And so, if you think about the jury room in Justice, at the Justice Center, the jury room is not sufficiently sized to allow for separation. If you got a twelve-man jury, twelve-person jury, you're gonna end up in a situation where you can't allow them into the jury room together to conduct their deliberations. If you have any substitute jurors who are also part, they have to hear everything. They have to go with the jury. They have to be available in case there is an exit of a juror at any point in the trial. Uh, so generally, we have a couple of subs, uh, that also, you're talking about fourteen people and there's just, there is not a space, a place in the current Justice Center to be able to accommodate both the empaneling and the conduct of a jury trial, okay? Mr. Mayor?
Keep up the good work. Takes a lot of faith and effort and const, good constitution. So, thank you for what you do. Uh, Judge Enfinger and Judge Ratliff came down and visited and, uh, to add on everything Mr. Slay said was you can't even put a jury in a jury box and maintain social distancing. So, we don't know how long this is gonna go on. So, the problem we have is that ninety days have gone by without any courts. So, now you have people and defendants in jail that need to have a speedy trial and we gotta figure out a way to do it. So, I'm here to tell you, it doesn't matter about the cost. Brandon is here to assist in any way we can. Uh, so, it's bad and it's good because now we are under the same emergency declaration as the state and mirrors what the governor does. So, I'm here to tell you on behalf of the City of Brandon, and our board meets tonight and we'll talk about it as a board. But anything we got on the calendar, we're gonna eradicate, get out of the building. So, we will totally dedicate our building to serving the courts for as long as need be. I mean, justice needs to be served. We're gonna support, uh, law enforcement to the nth degree and the courts to the nth degree and you to the nth degree. And that's, that's what we're supposed to do. We have the ability to do that. Uh, we've completely toured the whole building, uh, so we can sequester a jury to, we can put as many as actually two thousand people in there standing shoulder to shoulder, but you're not gonna do that. But you're gonna need space for a couple hundred people to get a jury. A courtroom will not allow you to put jurors in a jury box. So, if you put them in the audience, then you can't have the media, uh, the defendant, his attorneys, and all the gizmos that go along with it. You just need a lot of space. We've got two ends of the building where our board meets and the senior center on the other end. And we'll just have to find a suitable place for the seniors, which I'm thinking is the library right now since- We've got two ends of the building where our board meets and the senior center on the other end, and we'll just have to find a suitable place for the seniors, which I'm thinking is the library right now, since it is also closed. So we'll make do, we'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that we can get, uh, folks that are incarcerated to whatever justice they ought to be rendered.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, that's it. So, I, I don't think so, I don't think so, I'm gonna tell them a couple of things here, we, we, there's some coordination that's gonna take place. Uh, the sheriff, we have our own court services, and so there will be some requirement, some responsibility on the part of the sheriff to provide, uh, the court services function of our law enforcement. There may be some, uh, additional support services that we, uh, that we find that we need from the City of Brandon. So there's some moving parts to this that we need to talk about. But the first step in this process is for you guys to declare that our current Justice Center cannot accommodate the requirements of the governor's order, okay? That's the first step, and then we will do the logistical part of this, the piece of this. Uh, we anticipate that there will be some costs associated with this, we've got to figure out how to structure the facility itself, at least temporarily, to account for how the court functions in these circumstances. That building was not set up to be a court, so it's gonna have to be rendered into some sort of, uh, temporary court setting, there may be some costs associated with that. There may be some additional costs associated with support services that goes with that, I'm not, I want you guys to understand that there's probably gonna end up being some additional costs with this. All of which, we anticipate being able to show that this is related to the virus outbreak. And so we're gonna ask for reimbursement, and I've already mentioned this to the mayor, we're going to want to work with the City of Brandon so that any costs that they incur, to the extent that that needs to be included, to the extent that we need to be, uh, respectful of that, that we're able to work in lockstep to make sure that everybody gets a reimbursement for this additional expense. I wanted that to be on the record.
Good deal. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We're not gonna be looking for you for that, any of that expense, we'll bear our own expense, and we'll do the same repartee as you, because you're gonna have additional expense, we're gonna have additional expense, but it's incumbent on us to take care of the board's.
Yeah, it'd be nice enough if we actually gonna get any of that back, too.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent point.
Right.
It's an excellent point, Jake. Thank y'all for letting me step in and handle.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Slay.
See, need a motion?
We can do it when we get to it.
I wanted the mayor to have it, I need to speak to you.
He can, he can stay now, if he.
You come and go.
All right, let's see, uh, next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, aye. Consent agenda?
Still moving.
Motion by Daniel, approved, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes, aye. All right, uh, Mr. Sullivan is not here, so we'll, uh, have a.
I'll help us out here, uh, we've got a petition to change the assessment of twenty nineteen real and personal property assessment roll.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, aye.
Come up here with no fiber stuff, Harrison, after all.
Coming up here with the fiber. Uh, appreciate what y'all did while ago, uh, we do have two, the ceasefire A and B, uh, we got Kitty Hawk and Spillway Road, uh, we'll take those.
I think that Kitty Hawk stuff, those, kind of piece of both of us, isn't it?
Well, actually, actually, the, the B, Daniel, is gonna be probably all district two.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was gonna do A and B together, but.
Right. I'd like to take A and B together.
My motion's for A and B together.
All right, motion by Daniel, approved.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes, aye.
And I wanna add one, Jake.
All right.
Uh, Holly Bush Place, uh, ceasefire, gonna be laying some cable on Holly Bush Place, that's gonna be District Four.
Okay, have a motion to add this item?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad, all in favor, say aye. Ayes, aye. Ayes, aye.
And we were, we were, we were given the permit and made our comments on it. Yes, sir.
Whenever they're actually laying the fiber or doing the things that we're doing when we shut them down.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a way, because most of the subcontractors that we were dealing with before, they didn't speak English.
Right.
Couldn't tell who they worked for, nobody on the job could speak English. Is there a way that we can keep up with, when we have a problem or complaint, with who they are the sub for?
Well, actually, actually, right now.
There's not got signs and somebody there?
Supposed to.
But we can't find them.
Actually, what we're doing, our inspection, the way it does is, we approve it today, and send this back out. When they get ready to go to work, some of them have a hard time following this instruction, but when they get ready to go to work or call for their one calls, they send us a forty-eight hour notice, just like they do one call. All right, that puts us on that we know our inspectors need to be ready to go to the sites. Now, we don't spend all day with them, we, we've actually, like I said, it's started working real well, everybody's doing what they're supposed to do.
This is after we shut them down?
Yes, this is after we shut them down for the third or fourth time, they finally said, hey, we're gonna do it right, we're gonna do it like Rankin County wants to do it. And like I said, we're not monitoring whether they're OSHA compliance, we're monitoring where the cable goes. We're not, we're not doing their safety check.
Yeah, and Mike, one thing, on those regulations that we have.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't that mirror other counties?
Yes, sir.
Like, for example, who? I mean.
Well, I mean, I know DeSoto, a bunch of different counties, it's.
Are on that same, same five foot depth, straight down.
Right.
I wish I'd known that, I'd look, we've asked him that.
I mean, this guy.
Basically, what we did, Jared, is we backed up to what I call the old way that we used to bore. I mean, I bore, when we used to, when border machines first come out, you went out there, dug a bore pit, you shot through it, went to another area, and you shot through another bore pit, and you knew how deep you was, because the technology was not there. What we found out was the rainbow effect, everybody started doing, they start right here, well, they start at one foot. And when they get to five foot, they don't reach the five foot because they're having to come back up, I don't believe he can, I've never seen a directional board that can turn that quick.
If we got them to go to four feet, would that take out the OSHA regs that have the need?
Yeah.
I would say if you're gonna move it, don't go four, because you're right, that's where your electric.
That's where your electrical is.
Your middle of the.
You gotta go thirty-six or five.
I'm talking about the, the hole that they're digging, you know? The, if we went to four, that would take out the whole need for the, the.
Trench box.
Yeah. Is that right?
That is golf.
I don't, I don't know if that's the depth, I don't know what the depth is.
I mean.
If you wanna be real technical, you can go to four foot left.
So what would our, our drawbacks?
Five, five foot's the mark for the trench box?
What's the downside to us if we were to go to four feet? That one foot?
You're gonna be right there at the electrical, with electrical, I mean, that was our whole thought, that five foot gets us below the electrical, most sewer taps, everything.
But when they, when they get that marked, I mean, they know where electrical's sitting at, they're supposed to know.
Most of the time, they do, Brad, but I mean, that's just like out there in Castle Woods, that system's so old out there that, I mean, we was punching up, we was punching up junction boxes, they was punching up, I mean, it wasn't even located, you know, thirteen thousand volts that been buried in somebody's yard, and there was a location.
And it may only be four foot.
When they locate those. Correct. Utilities, does it tell them how deep that wires laying? It just says it's wrapped around this area.
Yes, sir.
And you supposed to give it a foot or two on each side, plate?
Actually, the way it should be done, like a new subdivision, everybody should be in their place, everybody should be, power should be at forty-eight, water should be at something. Gravity sewer, you cannot control it because it's gravity, so you, you've got to flow the way the flow line's going. Water should be at something, you, you know, uh, Comcast should be at a certain depth, I mean, that's the ideal situation, everybody's got their own depth to be at. But years ago, everybody just come in here and just went.
Find open spot and go.
They just went, you know, and they're, they're trying to go least past resistance, and, I mean, we've got cables that's been placed in the last year, Craig knows, I mean, they're on the edge of the blacktop, you know? I mean.
Just about in the road.
Yeah, I mean, because there was nothing out there, so let's just put it on the edge of the blacktop.
Well, we definitely, I think, have got a handle on it now, but maybe y'all could talk about it and just see, because I, I hate the idea of us putting more, this isn't the first time this came up, or even we've even discussed it.
But most utilities now, what they're doing, Jay, is just say their target is to pay it where Daniel is. Well, they back up to me, and they make that, start making that shot right there. Well, they hydro excavate, which is a real safe way, that's using water jetting to do a hole, they're not putting a man in the hole. And they just suck out that mud, and it's kind of a hole right there, and they shoot the ball right on through it, and they do that same hole where they're coming up at again, and.
Well, isn't that really and truly the exact same thing that we're talking about, though, because if they back up, they're still going down.
That's just to dig the hole, to do the bore, they're gonna.
Well, what I'm saying is, he starts back here, he starts back here, yeah, he's putting a box here. A little bit, I mean, you gotta get back past where you want to come.
He backs up, I mean, he's still.
Yeah, but that part won't even stay there.
It won't stay there.
It's just doing the hole.
Keep in mind, Jay, they, they dug a box, so if they were gonna hit something with their hole, it would have been reflected as a part of the, not a part of the bore, but as a part of digging the hole, putting stuff in, okay?
Where they, where they usually start it, they usually a box got to sit there, they gotta dig a hole for a box.
Yeah, okay. What is, what is the importance on a fiber optic cable, or any kind of cable, from, I mean, if it's really three foot deep versus, I mean, I know the electric is between.
Right.
Three and five, and I can understand why you want it deeper, I mean, you hit it, you're probably not gonna talk about it.
Right.
But you can hit a cable, and it probably won't kill you.
Right.
What, what is the significance of putting the cable in under?
Because ninety percent of the time, that's gonna be under our storm drain pipes and stuff like it, most of them was running at two or three foot, and dead hitting our pipes, infrastructure that was put in in the roadway, Steve. And what we found out, going that depth, gets under our storm drain infrastructure, and they're not drilling through it.
How does electric get past our storm drain?
It was all put in before, most of that was put in before the storm drains was ever put in.
All the new stuff is above ground anyway.
You know, but if they do, they have to go under, you know?
I also wanna point one thing out, I think you guys need to think about before you start whittling on your regs, okay? That, what we're talking about here is service to new construction, or to existing house tops in new developments that don't have the infrastructure, don't have this access to this particular.
One of the ones on here is Kitty Hawk, and it's been there for at least twenty years.
Yeah, it's developments, though, where they don't have any, any infrastructure at all, Steve. Um, so, he, you, I, I'm encouraging you guys to think about it economically as well, from their perspective. If they want to be in that location, providing the, the, that level of service to customers, they need to comply with our regulation. If they are wanting to go into repair existing infrastructure, and it's a one-off because somebody's, uh, service line has been damaged somehow, then I think we can work with that, we can figure out a way to help them with that.
Have to work with it.
But if they're wanting to put new service into a subdivision, either new construction or existing subdivision where they've not had any service at all, they're making a business decision.
But I don't know, see, I, when they first come in and got the permit, and I know when we had that meeting in December, we had all the utility companies in here. And we, they was told very clear, all utilities have to do a permit now. We still got a bunch that don't do a permit, uh, in Rankin County.
You just catch them one at a time?
Just as we catch them, you know?
And how we, how we stumbled across this deal is the homeowners called complaining.
Yeah.
Because something got cut.
Well, something got cut, and then they ended up digging up the yard, left a mess over the weekend, and open holes, it was, it was all against our regulations.
Until they come through your neighborhood, people, the, people don't grasp the, uh, I mean, in Reservoir East, in Holly Bush Place, and those, I, they couldn't even let their children play in the yard, because there was, I'm gonna say somewhere approaching a hundred people, and probably twenty different vans and pickups, nobody spoke English, and they were all, you know, uh, it was a terrible, terrible disruption.
Our new regs is front that.
Right.
Because I know the other day, uh, in Daniel's area, contractor was out there, he's still working in Castlewood. And he said, I'm gonna bring in some subs, he says, is the, if I, they make a mistake, is it gonna ding me? And I said, yes, they're your subs.
Yeah.
You're the one that.
But you know, Mike.
That contractor with ceasefire, so when they found out that it was gonna ding against them, they decided, well, we just, it may take us six more months here, but we're gonna stay like we are.
We would go out, there wouldn't be a sign on the vehicle.
I know.
No, every one of the groups, you could stop it, nobody spoke English, they'd point down the road, and they'd keep pointing you down the road, and we'd hear you're out of the subdivision. And, I mean, it's a, a lot of our resources, you are people that inspect, the sheriff's department gets calls, and, I mean, these two guys, they may be very, they may be the angels of boring, but, uh, I hope that. When they come through your neighborhood, you will, then I think people will respect what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, I mean, ceasefire has put a man on the ground that can communicate with those people, because I told them, we're not gonna try to communicate with them, you know? If they can't communicate directly with us, you know, so they put a guy on the ground. Now, AT&T, we ain't quite got them where we want them yet, but we're working on it, uh, you know, and now Comcast has popped up. I mean, typically, ninety percent of our stuff in the subdivisions is probably fourteen inches deep.
From a long time ago, or from before this pass went.
But see, they got a cable in here.
Yeah.
They've already put a cable in this neighborhood, they got Comcast box in there.
Yeah.
And I told Comcast when they did the permit, if they had to repair, just like I've treated everybody else, if you gotta repair just a service line to a house, all you gotta do is send in a forty-eight hour notice, I'll look it over, we'll get our inspector to come out there just to do. Well, what's helped us a lot, Steve, is, is we're documenting where they are, and who's where they are. So if we have a problem, just like over in Castlewood, if somebody sewer don't go to work, and I look back and I say, hey, ceasefire was here yesterday. Their sewer was working two days ago, now it's not working, I'm calling ceasefire. And ceasefire's been good about Johnny on the spot, getting out there checking it out, we just got to get everybody else to that, to that level. It's, it's no difference in the wa- it's no different than the waste management thing y'all was talking about, it's the communication.
I think we're better, we're worse.
Absolutely, we've made leaps and bounds, but I still would like y'all to discuss the possibility going to four feet, rising to five, because, you know, everything rolls downhill.
I understand, but I think if we got, I think if we adjust, we got to adjust across the board, Jay, I think it's hard to regulate one at this, one at that, you know?
All right, we had, we, we added it to the agenda, we need to vote on it.
What's that?
Holly Bush Place.
Well, Holly Bush Place, yeah.
You wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to add Holly Bush, no, we added it to approve Holly Bush for a.
All right, motion by Steve to approve.
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, aye.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike. Are you coming back to talk to us some, some more about roads under other business or something?
Additional business, yes, sir, when y'all get to additional business, I'll talk to you.
All right.
All right, Tim. A little Skill shirt, something. It looks good.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I didn't get any comment on the hair, though, he got the hair comment, so I'll take the shirt.
That's because he cut his hair.
At least I got some.
He's dapper now, everything, you know?
The first item we have, Mr. President, is, uh, Sawgrass Lakes, Part Three. We're recommending approval of the final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars, that's a District Three subdivision.
Make a motion. Motion by Brad to approve, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Mr. Weaver. No, I, I did have a question, and, um.
Eighteen.
I don't know, about a month ago, somebody called, and, and when you coming in off of, uh, the Greenfield Station Road, the first house on your left, and I think me and Tim and Mike went over there. I mean, it's probably Southern Pine, but where that wooden fence is, there's a lot of holes along that wooden fence, and I don't know if that's part of some of your development, or.
Are we talking about off Greenfield Circle?
No, Greenfield Station.
They drag in.
Only left, before you get to Loop Around.
Pass a pool on the left. You got a burn built there, wood benches are.
Yes, okay, okay, yes. Before you get to the right guy, yes, yes, yes.
And of course, that's off the county right away there, but the, the plaintiff was asking about the holes along the fence, and I don't know if they put the wooden fence over the top where maybe Southern Pine put their electrical line down. Do you know anything about that?
Uh, I know the gentleman has called requesting that we come and look at it.
Okay. Can you look into that?
Yeah, we certainly will. Thank you. Good day.
Alright.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you. Alright, we already did. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Alright.
Item B, Mr. President, is we're requesting authority to advertise the North Shore Causeway Bridge Guard Rail Improvements Project.
Yeah, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion?
Yeah, what's that, the one that they, we've been with a long time?
Been going on five years now.
Yes. And it's, since, if, if we can, if I can just add this, for clarity purposes, the, the actual inter-local agreement that's required for us to be cooperative with PRV on this project has been fully executed and has been tendered to the Attorney General for approval. It has not come back approved yet. I expect that it will be, but it's just a timing issue on that. There's no reason to hold up the advertisement of the project. We don't anticipate any issues. If we have some issue with the Attorney General over there local, then we won't be moving forward until we get that sorted out. But, so this is a timing thing. We're not gonna hold up the advertisement of the project while we're waiting on what we expect to get.
Gotcha. Alright. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the Gunner Road Clearing and Grubbing Project, and we have a corrected amount. We're requesting approval of payout number three to Pearson Dozer Service LLC in the amount of ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-five cents for work performed. Our office is sending an incorrect number. That was not Ms. Janice's fault.
Alright. You have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve, any discussion?
What'd you made, what'd you say, when you said corrected?
The agenda has ninety-four thousand, seven, seventeen, thirteen, it's actually ninety-four thousand, two hundred and twelve eighty-five.
I do have, well, go ahead, I'm gonna ask something after. I'll make motion to approve.
I already seconded it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I, only question I got, well, like the other day, I was out there, I noticed, I don't know who needs to punch him up, because the other day when I was out there looking at an issue about something, but, um, it might have been too wet to be working on clearing. But he's got, he's got a place there, he's got logs stocked up there, and a truck loaded. It's just a mess. There's no reason he couldn't have been hauling that day. That'd been a great day, but it's been, they've been, according to the, the landowner or next door, it's been sitting like that for a long time. And so, that's creating part of the problem, because he's got permission to stock them there, and it's just a muddy place where they've been pulling them in and out. And that's one reason I think the landlords have an issue. The water can't run, because of all the ruts, and it's leaving subsoil, plowed all up. But I don't know what we need to do on a day like that. Why, why aren't he telling somebody to haul those things, get them out of there? So, somebody just needs to put a little fire under him.
We have been trying to meet, we've had a field rep on site quite a bit with Ms. Pearson, and the project engineer is visiting the site on a very regular basis now, to try to get those things moving. Because you're right, some, some of the things it could be doing when necessarily couldn't be cleared haven't been being done.
Perfect time. I was out there, I was like, wonder why we're not moving these. The truck, one truck was sitting there loaded, the guy said, I think that thing's been loaded for weeks.
Right. Yeah, interesting.
Anyway, alright.
Item D, Mr. President, Spillway Road, North Shore Parkway Project. We're recommending an approval of payout number ten to Hemp Hill Construction in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents for work performed through April, twenty twenty, and authority to issue the check.
Alright. You have a motion?
It just pains my heart. It pains me. Deep down, how much more do we have still left on the project, you think?
We've got over seventy thousand dollars in dollars.
Still left?
Yes. And there's not, as far as work left to do, there's not, there's not near that amount. They're, they're basically in punch lists, they've got the striping to do, they've got some punch list items, they've got.
What about that little sidewalk strip?
The sidewalk, the sidewalk is part of what I'm calling punch list type small. Minor items of work is what M.D. refers to those items.
So, all of those things would hold under the seventy thousand dollar range?
Absolutely, yes.
So, this'll, alright.
Yeah, so, so the, the surface asphalt was placed after April, so none of the surface asphalt is on this pay request, so there's ample monies left.
So, I'm making a motion to approve.
Alright, motion by Daniel grudgingly. Second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold on, Tim. I'm, I just wanna ask you a question. I'm seeing this cloud approval at North Shore Causeway, and Gunner Road, and then Spillway.
It'll sink there.
I don't see anything on here with Andrew Chapel.
Janice may have left it all.
Oh, that's probably, no, no, that's not probably. That road is almost impassable, man.
Yes, sir. We, I wrote it with.
Worst road in, by far in my district, I think is the worst collector type road in Rankin County.
Probably so. Been that way for a long time.
So, where we are is, Joe McGee is back on site doing the second box. I'm not sure if we've had any communications with him yet about his, his finish date, but, but he is back on site. The utilities or have submitted permits, we've got water companies submitted, and the permits for the utility relocations are beginning to come in, so I expect some utility relocations to be happening pretty quickly. And then we'll, we need to assess the status of where Joe McGee is versus, I think, all the properties have been acquired now.
With the exception, Steve, of our eminent domain cases.
It's gotta go.
That are, that are scheduled.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. With the exception of those five parcels, all of the rights of way have been acquired. In fact, I got four pay packs sitting right here that take care of the remaining acquisitions that are voluntary, leaving only the court acquisitions. So, to point here, there, there's a timeframe, there's a timeline on the acquisitions that has been visited on us because of the court system versus us being able to dictate. We had hearings, by the way.
But we still get to go for it, right? We don't have to wait on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. But here's the issue, Jay, you still have to be on court's calendar.
Okay.
If the court ain't courting.
Yeah, but we are now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We have, we have, here it goes. We got launched off of our May twenty-first date, and now we have an early July date. So, but.
So, what, what is holding us up as far as getting the project? Go ahead and bid it out.
I would say two things primarily. Utility relocation is your number one issue, your, your utility relocation issue.
So, where are we currently with that?
Well, we have a number of utilities that are relocating, and we have a couple of utilities that are asking us to consider significant cost reimbursement for their relocation requirement.
So, if they purchased it upfront, and they can show that, then we need to pay it?
Well, the, the law requires that the county, if they are relocating from private easement.
Right.
That they acquired, and is going to be subject to an extension of our right of way, we have to pay them to relocate.
Yeah. So, we know that.
If they're on our right of way now, and we're asking them to move.
Yeah.
We don't pay them to relocate. So, we, we have to sort all that out, and get a number, and then ask you guys to consider that reimbursement request, and we have, and we, we are anticipating being able to get y'all a number on that. So, utility relocation is your number one issue.
Where are we at on that, Tim?
On utility relocation?
Yeah, on, on discovering what number we need to get to, so we can move forward.
We're waiting on that utility to give us a hard number.
There you go.
You talking water?
No, sir.
Electric, energy. The water has, everything's settled with it?
We have, we have approved their permit.
Okay.
And they haven't, they haven't been, they're not on site yet, relocated.
I, I remember.
We have, we have approved their permit. So, the intent, after, Mike and I looked at it last week, and now the utilities are starting to make some motions to get relocated, what, what we need to do, and our plan this week was to sit down with you and, and figure out, I, I still think we're gonna have to phase that project in some, some ways, because of the south ends in a little bit different situation in the north end. We've got the box cover that's towards the north end, that's still under construction, so we're, we gotta be careful with having two contractors on site. But I think we can develop a plan and, and try to put some dates on it to when we can get the thing ready to move. We just needed to make a final decision as to how, how we're gonna advertise the project, because as we put plans together, we, we've got, the design is done, but whether it's in one phase or two phase, that obviously dictates how we put our final plans and specs together, which is a few, few days worth of work. We just gotta make that.
Let's put on our calendar for every day of the week, check on Andrew Chapel. This was, this was scheduled out of the bond ten years ago, ten years ago.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't want us to get through this bond and say, well, we didn't get to phase two.
Well, I do know out of past experience that AT&T can be extremely long in relocating their utilities, so if they're one of them, we, we need to start right now, sending them letters, asking them to get going.
We, we have some leverage.
They don't draw on AT&T.
If they want a permit, we can say, we.
Absolutely.
We, we need you to fix this over here on Andrew Chapel.
And part of our, the meeting we have is in December, Mike, November, December?
First, the first part of December.
I think it was in the first part. We, we met with all the utilities on that project, so, everybody's, nobody's, it's a surprise to no one that that project's happening. I mean, it's, we met with them in December.
We met with them on Gunner Road, all our projects we had, gave them drawings, said we're moving forward. So, they've been known since first December that we're doing it.
You talking about AT&T?
Any of them.
Well, I, I think definitely we, on these requests.
Do we need to encourage them a little stronger? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, we've had to pay energy upfront before, too, on another project. So, yeah, I was just trying to help Steve get his issues going there, man.
Done.
Alright, thank you, Tim. Mr. Slade?
Mr. President, I've already asked for one indulgence, and I'm gonna dare to ask for one more, if I may.
Sure.
We have some individuals here who've been waiting patiently outside, and I wanted to, to go ahead and take this opportunity to, to deal with the very last item under my section, which is item S. I would like to engage in a time to welcome and introduce the newest Commissioner of the Richland Creek Drainage District, Mr. Alvin Beck, who has been appointed by the Rankin County Chancery Court to serve in the, what has been a vacant position as Commissioner of the Richland Creek Drainage District. And so, if I can get, well, Ms. Janice is trying to corral him for us right now. We wanted to have this opportunity to introduce him to you guys, to let you meet him, if you don't already know him, and to give him an opportunity, to the extent that they wish to do so, to offer any words that they wish to have offered to you at this time. So, if I can get our Richland Creek Drainage District folks to come on, you didn't have to wait at all, Mr. Freddie, once we got you in.
Come on.
So, Mr. Beck, and I've seen lots of folks.
I've seen a lot of them.
Freddie Harrell is here. One of the Commissioners of the Richland Creek Drainage District, he is, he is a friend of Rankin County, he's no stranger to any of us. Mr. Mike Smith is also here. He is a Commissioner for the Richland Creek Drainage District, has been serving for a number of years. Mr. Alvin Beck, who is our newest Commissioner, has been recently appointed by the Rankin County Chancery Court to serve as the third and final member of the Richland Creek Drainage District Board of Commissioners. It's exciting to have a full complement of the Richland Creek Drainage District Board of Commissioners now. We have, as a full complement, we now have the opportunity to begin visiting with these Commissioners on behalf of the Board, to determine if there is an opportunity, if there are opportunities, plural, for Rankin County and for Richland Creek to cooperate with each other toward improvement of the, the issues of drainage, which are systemic issues for Rankin County, the issues of drainage. As an official Drainage District, Richland Creek has a, a unique position in that it is qualified under federal law as a partner for federal government projects, and potentially a qualifier for federal funding towards drainage improvements. And so, it occupies.